All right, let's call to order the Dover
I'll explain Judy.
The Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting for January 7th, 2020. Happy New Year, everyone. 6:30. I'd like to just note quickly that we're shy a member. Lynn isn't here because her daughter plays basketball for DS, and they have a game tonight, and she wanted to be at the game. So go Raiders.
Go Raiders.
And let's, can I start then? Wyatt, can I start with you so that you can do your report? And then you're welcome to leave when you're done.
Yeah, whatever, it's fine. So I have a quick, quick little summary of what Student Council's been doing. We have our town meeting soon, which is basically where we meet with the whole grade about issues, each individual grade. So us as juniors will meet with our junior peers and discuss changes that we want to see fit with our school. And we'll later after that meet with Mr. Smith about possible changes. So that's really cool. And then the last point I have is mid-years are starting Tuesday. Actually, the following week. So yeah, that's basically it.
Can I ask you, did, do you know, did a bunch of the teams play, have games and tournaments and things over the vacation?
Yes. We, I actually went to a basketball game. It was really fun. We won that one. And basketball had, I think, another game they won. I'm not sure about Alpine Ski, but I know that we've had some recent success basketball-wise.
That's awesome. That's good to hear.
And those town, the town meetings, how often do you have those?
Once a year.
Once a year.
And it's for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors.
And so do you feel like, you know, it's productive?
Yes, it's been really good.
It actually results in changes that you guys?
Yeah, junior privilege is probably the most notable change that we've gotten, where with, well, actually, school-wide, people can come in early, late a period if they have a DR. So that's probably the, the most important one we've had.
How's that working out?
That's really awesome, because everybody gets to sleep in, and we all love it. So, yeah.
That's awesome.
Awesome. I appreciate it. I'd love to hear next meeting about how town meeting?
Yes.
Curious to hear about that. All right, well, as always, thank you so much for coming and filling us in. And you're welcome to stay if you want, but really, you can leave.
I, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to check to see if there are any community comments this evening. You want to get up and do something interesting? All right, we're good. So let's go, move on to reports. Do you want to skip down? Do? All right.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you can.
So let's just go to the budget discussions, and then we'll flip back up.
Perfect.
Perfect.
That works great. So, so as you know, we've been, we've been working on the FY21 budget. We presented some items last month to the Regional School Committee. And we have two more important pieces that we were hoping to share this evening. One is related to a one-to-one computer rollout, potentially. And, and the other is related to a special education adjustment that really kind of falls on the heels of the reorg that we did this year. So for those purposes, Beth and Anthony are going to lead the discussion on the one-to-one proposal. And then a little later, Kate McCarthy will talk about the sped position.
Can I clarify? It's one-to-one at the middle school.
At the middle school. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So as you know, in 2016, we had a multi-stakeholder group come together and create the Dover Sherburne Technology Plan, which, believe it or not, is going to be ending in 2021 and looking for revision. We've made significant progress on it. We meet with a small group from year to year and look at the goals and where we stand and ask, you know, teachers and whatnot, what's next. One of the goals in the plan, which I included in the longer report, was to research models, including bring-your-own device and one-to-one, to ensure that every student and educator has at least one internet device and appropriate software and resources needed, and also to investigate take-home technology for student use. So while we've been working on a number of the pieces of the technology plan, this is one that's just been kind of settling. The exciting thing is that, you know, although the strategic plan represents the voices of all of our community members, teachers, students, parents, taxpayers, oftentimes, things that come out of the strategic plan feel like they're top-down. This proposal tonight was actually a grassroots effort from the teachers who have come together and said, "We really would like to move forward with the one-to-one idea using Chromebooks for students to use in school and at home. So can we move this forward on the technology agenda and get to it sooner rather than later?" So that being said, I would like to ask your permission if we can have some of the teachers share the rationale for, you know, how they're using their Chromebooks now and what they see the benefit of this new model being. Would that be okay? Okay, so we have Sarah Collins, Social Studies. We have Kim Phalen, Social Studies. We have Anna Hurley, Science. Erin Newman, Math and Special Education. And Alison Von Roura, World Language, Spanish. Would anybody like to share current uses of Chromebooks and how you think this program could benefit your profession and learning for students?
Um, we, I'll start, because I was one of the people to help pioneer BYOD when we first started that. We thought that would be the thing that would fix our technology access issues. And it started off maybe a little better than it's worked out. So I think early on, we had maybe close to 50% of the kids bringing devices. We're down to less than 20% bringing them on a regular basis. So what happens is, when you want to use technology in the classroom, you have to sign out computer cards, which are very heavily booked and used in advance. And this is not to replace direct instruction. It's to teach kids how to use technology as a tool in the classroom. For example, right now, my students are working on their write to an elected official project. We've been using a lot of database research. This has to be guided by teachers in the classroom. This is not something we can just send students off to do on their own. Today, we were looking at how you contact an official, where you can find information using House, Senate, whitehouse.gov website. But right now, it seems like every teacher in the school needs the technology. We're duking it out on a daily basis in the classroom that we share for who has these devices. We're all sharing, we're splitting cards between two, three, and four teachers sometimes. It makes it very inefficient, because when students are doing their own research, they really need a device in front of them. It's not something that you can share between two or three students, as they're all researching different topics. It's also far easier as a teacher if you have one type of technology that you're using, rather than dealing with four or five different types of devices in the classroom. But so when I'm using it, it's research, it's writing, it's exploring things that they need to do in a supervised setting in school.
I have a unique situation where I wrote a grant years ago to embed coding into the science classroom. So I was granted a Chromebook card from DSCF, and that Chromebook card lives in my classroom. So I am kind of a unique case where I have my very own card that is dedicated to my science classroom. So I'm a bit of a, a test case or a pilot, if you would, for like the last seven years of where I've had, I don't, I think it's seven years, things are blurry. But it's been a long time now, actually, where I've had daily access, you know, like unlimited access to devices. And I find that the students are wonderful about hopping on, getting into Google Classroom, like they're very proficient, they're able to use the technology appropriately. And it's just been a marvelous asset and accoutrement to my teaching, because in science, we can get to all different things. They can have all the, their needs met for different learning styles, whether they need something read aloud, or they need the closed captioning, et cetera, et cetera. I would share that recently, I also got to go to High Tech High, and I think one of the most impressive things I heard from them is that they are, the name is a bit of a misnomer, but intentional, they are High Tech High, not because they are pro-technology, but they very much recognize that we live in a technology-immersive society, and we need to be teaching kids to be good consumers and users of technology. And so I feel like for us to be able to execute some of our 21st century aspirations for the kids, we really need to bring in that updated technology and make it part of their daily diet in terms of knowing how to word process, access information, filter information, organize information. Thinking about coming to see you guys, I was going to mention how, you know, the technology wasn't there even 10 years ago. iPads were very new. And so thinking about all of our digital lives and the pictures of our kids and all of our files, and what a hot mess they most likely are, because we just dove in. And I feel that it would be amazing if, at the middle level, we could start teaching children how to organize their digital lives. And so I see this as a tremendous opportunity for setting up, them up for success for not only middle school, but high school and college, and to be adults like us. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
I'd like to jump off of the, the filtering and accessing information piece, because this year I've also been teaching a section of 7th grade Media Studies, which it is rare to teach a class in English, but I'm getting past it. And one of the things we discovered is that we really do need daily access to these devices. And much to the annoyance of my coworkers, I have reserved one of the carts for that one block every day, because we, we do need it. We're doing, we're practicing researching and citing sources. We are looking at plagiarism and examples of it. We are figuring out what is a credible source and what is not. We're looking at examples of fake news, comparing War of the Worlds from 1938, which would never happen now, except it did in Hawaii in 2018. So with that elective, especially, all of the media that we're looking at is now online. It never even occurred to me to bring in a newspaper into class. Someone handed me a bunch of magazines, and I was like, "Oh, what are these for?" And they were like, "Oh, it's for your Media Studies class." And I'm like, "Okay." That's, that's really what they're doing, where we are doing a mini-unit on what they are, and how they came about, and why they're funny, and which ones are appropriate. And so that aspect of it has really been astounding to me, just how frequently we need the access to the internet for that particular class. And then speaking to the language part of it, especially with the rest kids coming up, and our whole department is going through a significant pedagogical shift, that we're really looking at taking the textbook and not using it as the basis for our curriculum anymore. It is a research that we need on when we choose to, but our curricula are now written around thematic units. They deal with current topics, real-life situations, and real-life people, and cultures, and societies. And those textbooks are static. They're not, they're not real. They are written for Spanish students. And we are really moving towards authentic resources. And in order to have access to authentic podcasts, or YouTube videos, or blogs, or articles, we do need that, that access to technology, that standardized access to technology, that have every student having the same device would allow us, and having a reliable access to it as well. I also, last piece is, I am one of the people who has adopted a Chromebook cart overnight. So the green cart sleeps in my room upstairs every night. Before I leave work, I make sure they are plugged in, and make sure the cart is plugged in. If any of them are not getting plugged in, I send them down to IT in the morning. If any of them are in the wrong cart, I go buy the orange cart, and green cart, or the yellow cart, and never turn them. I am one of four teachers who has volunteered to kind of adopt those carts. That is time that we are volunteering to take care of it. But one of the things I have really noticed is that, unlike the students who are bringing their own devices every day, there is no accountability on the carts of the students for those devices. If they're missing, who knows who took it off? If it doesn't charge, because the charging port is broken, we don't know when that happened or who. Kids can walk off with a Chromebook, and then all of a sudden, I'm expecting to have 20 Chromebooks for my 21st class, and there are 13, and five of them are dead. So the accountability issue is, is a serious one. We are very lucky that one of our English teachers did take it upon herself last year to start this, this system of having teachers host the carts during study halls and overnight to kind of mitigate that, but it is still a serious issue. With a one-to-one program where everyone has the same device, and you are only able to log into your own device, there will be much more incentive for them to take ownership of keeping track of it, taking care of it, making sure it's, it's charged and ready to go.
Feel free to add on to that if there's anything that were different.
So adding on to both what Kim and, what bonus of accountability, I hadn't considered that yet. Where Kim is working with kids to write letters, the sixth graders right now are starting one of their first academic research courses. And we were in the library today with Ms. Woodburn, learning, you know, what do we look for in an accountable website? What's reliable? And she had a Call of Duty site up to say, "Do you think this is reliable?" And some of the kids said, "Yes." So we are, they really, they're learning from us. And being able to walk behind 15 kids while they're at websites, saying, "What do you, you know, does this work? Does this work?" They, having a person with them and doing these things in the classroom really is valuable for them. And having the access on a regular basis, rather than the two or three times a year, it, more than that feels greedy to reserve the Chromebook cart constantly for, you know, for five classes a day, when there's four Chromebook carts for the entire middle school. And thinking about what their lives are like, they're digital natives, and many of us are digital adopters, but how many of our calendars and our schedules are on Google Calendar? How many of our files are mostly in Docs and Drive? And yet, we're asking kids, who are still learning to get organized, to constantly carry around their planner? I mean, I don't know how many planners we replace every year for kids who lose them the first week, the first quarter. But quite a few. And the kids I've had come in who are organizationally challenged, and when we changed their organization system to having a Chromebook and using Google Calendar for their assignments, their homework completion goes up, we are making fewer copies, they were, they are less stressed, because it's not running down the hallway to find out where they left that last binder. And while those things still happen, having regular access would really give them a life more like what they will experience in the future, rather than to ask them to live in analog life at school, in a digital life everywhere else.
Anything to add, Miss Nellie?
I guess. Sure, really quick. That made me think about how they're using technology outside of the building. So if they're, they're using it outside, not necessarily for educational purposes. So if they start using it more in here for educational purposes, I think that they'll see a better connection. The two other things I was thinking about was, I've participated in the Innovation Committee and now part of Fuse, which is looking at personalized learning and blended learning, which technology is a piece of. So I do think it's super important to understand, it's not going to become like the only thing we do in the classroom. But it is a great tool for the math perspective, to do a quick formative assessment and see, like, where they are. We've been experimenting with some tools that will give them different skills to practice based on that formative assessment. And then the idea, I was doing that a lot where they were doing it at home, but I've been able to now watch them look behind their back in the classroom and see right away when they're getting stuck, and can go in there and fix it right then with a one-on-one conversation. So I think it'll have, really help with some personalized learning, some kind of getting to what they need, as well as a portrait of a graduate. So like, I think about having them create things. And just today, we had them collaborating on some enduring understandings, like big questions from our math unit, in a Google slideshow, so then they could share with everybody. But I was watching them do it, and they were still talking while they were doing it, as opposed to doing it for homework, coming in and then having to somehow share that, you know, I couldn't monitor that sharing. So those are things I would add. You're a great power.
Thank you. Thank you all. And in terms of the technology piece, obviously, there is a strong argument for the pedagogical piece and how it's going to benefit our teaching and learning, but obviously, this is a, a big undertaking. So Anthony is here to talk about all the work that he's done collaborating with other districts and Jaba Lakes, and his team, to think about what would this look like practically?
Yeah, thank you. I'll go over a little bit of what my, kind of my plan is. You know, I'll be working with Wally Computer over the summer, and Wally has what's called like the White Glove Service, where they will asset-tag the devices. They'll provide me with a spreadsheet that has the asset-tagged, the serial number, and that device is actually assigned to a student. And then we'll take, and they give me a spreadsheet of all that information. And then we'll take that spreadsheet, and we import that into our admin panel. That's how we manage all of our Chrome devices. And when it's in the admin panel, we take control of everything. We take basically ownership of the device. We control what, what they can install, what extensions they can install. And there's even cool things coming down the, down the way now, where the teachers can have a thumbnail view of every device in their classroom. So the kids really can't, like, you know, drift off and do what they're not supposed to be doing in the classroom. You know, they can even put them in kiosk mode to lock the student into, like, what they're working on that day. There's a lot of, lot of things that we can control once they're in our admin panel. At the end of the year, they'll all be turned in and power-washed to bring them back to, basically, to brand-new. So we don't have to worry about them getting slow or performance issues. Professional development, as far as that goes, most of them are already using Google Classroom and the entire Google Suite, and all PD can be done basically in-house. We have tech integrators, myself and my team, that all know the Google, the Google Suites, and basically all the applications and extensions that they would be needing to use. As far as BYOD goes, like they were saying, it started off strong, but it's very inconsistent now. It also excludes the sixth graders. We don't allow them to bring their devices in. So, you know, just fighting over the carts has become very, very problematic. When they do bring in their own devices, it's, believe it or not, it's a big burden on the IT department. These kids are lining up at our door to have us, you know, whether it be get their devices online, or to even repair their own personal devices that they find a way to break, they count on us. And we obviously can't touch those, because, you know, voiding warranties, or et cetera. So, I mean, basically, the bring-your-own-device, we gave it a shot mainly because we were waiting to find out the right device for a one-to-one. And, I mean, it's a no-brainer, it's a Chromebook. I've dealt with a lot of other districts that had iPad one-to-ones, and, and, you know, to be a Google domain like we are, and just have full control over everything from our, our domain admin panel, it's definitely the Chromebook is the device we want to go So the way I plan to roll it out is, we have a mandatory meeting set up, I discussed this with Scott, where we would have all the parents and students in an assembly, and that's where we would go over basically the contract. There's an insurance policy that we're going to ask the parents to take care of. It's $18 a year, and this is to cover basically just lost or stolen Chromebooks. Everything else, we will be taking complete ownership of. So, you know, if something breaks, we'll have the loaners ready to manage right through our C-panel. And I've also discussed this, discussed this with my staff, because it is a big undertaking. And, you know, are we shorthanded? Do we have enough staff to handle this? And the answer is, we absolutely do. We've been handling these devices for a while now, and to bring more on board, the way we have it streamlined, it, it would be pretty easy to manage, the way we can, you know, substitute a broken one right in the panel for the loner laptop. That one goes out to get repaired when it comes back in. We have it all, all documented right in the panel. And also at that meeting, so we'd go over the, the contract with the, the parents, the insurance pan, plan, and then we'd discuss cases. I would like to see the parents purchase the cases. That's something that we have on our next steps, that we're going to discuss further as a district. We definitely need to have cases on them, that way the kids can personalize them. You know, I'd encourage them to put a sticker of their favorite band or whatever on the, on the, the Chromebook case, that way you can identify it. You know, having all the same Chromebooks, it would be nice for the child to have something that really makes it his own. And I'm recommending this over the, any other, like, system that you can go with. Some people have, you know, mentioned maybe have the parent buy the device, or, but I just prefer to take complete ownership of it. It's a $250 device, when it's all said and done, and we'll be getting three years out of it. You know, the parents would also question everything. With the BYOD, the way we have it now, you know, I get a lot of calls from parents asking what type of device, if they needed to be, et cetera. And, you know, it, it just gets, it gets a little crazy and out of control when I'm just dealing with all the parents. So I prefer to just take complete ownership of the device. And then also, when we have ownership of the device, MCAS is, is a really big thing to me. When we own the device, we push MCAS out, you know, to the devices for the students. It's very, very tricky with the bring-your-own-device. We haven't even gone down that route yet. And then, lastly, I'd also just prefer to take ownership because of the updates and the security. We can't count on the students to, to update their operating systems, keep them up to the latest security patches and, and all that. So yeah, I hope that covers everything.
Can I follow up, Anthony?
Absolutely.
Either you or perhaps one of the teachers? Because I think this is an important point. As Kim mentioned, when you went to BYOD, I believe I was a principal probably at that time, and we were, you know, contemplating whether to go one-to-one. It was a big discussion, and should it be? We concluded, oh, we're going to be smarter than everyone else. We weren't going to go with iPads for high-school-aged kids. We would go with MacBooks. But the big issue at that time was, first of all, we used Microsoft products, basically. You know, you'd buy Microsoft Office, you'd have your PowerPoint, your Excel, your Word, and the kids saved to either a flash drive or to the hard drive on their computers. Things have changed, correct? So if we're, as you said, a Google, how did?
Domain.
Domain. So we're a Google domain. So that means all of the students are saving now to the cloud.
Correct.
So you can wash those computers at the end of the year without fear of losing somebody's dissertation. You know, this, this is not an issue, because they save to the cloud. I also want to know more about the, the filing of documents, because I do believe that executive functioning is an issue. I think if you look at IEPs, I would guess that frequently you'll see issues around executive functioning, especially for middle-school-aged boys, for some reason. You know, it's the, it's the famous, think of it as the backpack stuffed with all the assignments. And the kid comes home, and the parent's like, "Well, where is it?" And they're looking through these crumpled-up pages. This is a whole different way of thinking and filing that our kids need to, to be prepared for. So I appreciate your bringing that up, but I'm wondering, my real question was, how much different is it now, especially with a $200 device versus something that was 1,500, you know, five or six years ago, 250? Is it that much? Is it because we're this Google domain? I mean, is that the big driver?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. We, when you, when you enroll into the Google domain, every child gets the login. Even before the age of 13, they can have a Google login without email, and that just puts everything to the cloud. It eliminates a lot of our, the burden on our file servers, the backups, everything we do. When you log into the Chromebook, you're logging into the cloud, so, yes.
And what about the, the other question I had for the teachers is, I've often heard about the time that's spent trying to log these different devices that come in from outside on, and how much? I, I had the opportunity to teach a lesson on Twitter. Some of you were there, I think, on the professional day. And honestly, I probably lost 20 minutes trying to get this, to log into my account, because I'd never logged on in the middle school. So is that a challenge for you guys?
Yes, I would say we lose on average 10 minutes of class period, getting kids on and off devices, sending them into the hallway, collaborating, finding devices, seeing who can share, who left them in their locker. It's also an equity issue. You know, when student X walks in with the newest MacBook that's updated, and they're started 30 seconds after class is in, meanwhile, you've got 17 other children in the classroom trying to find, you know, the school device. That's an equity issue. It's a problem. And it really is challenging to teach on different devices. You know, you have the child on an iPad. Well, Google Read and Write doesn't work on the iPad. The Google Comment feature doesn't work. That's all we use for English and Social Studies in giving them feedback on their writing, is that Google platform. It doesn't work on some of those devices. So standardizing that and having it equal for all students would be a really big deal. It would streamline and simplify starting, finishing class. You don't lose that time with sending people out to put things away. And the expectation that they would walk in, then I can say, "Oh, I'll use a computer for a five-minute mini-assessment at the start or end of class," rather than saying, "I want to block out the entire period." I want to block out the entire period to use this device, which then prevents somebody else from using it.
Yeah. And just to expand on that, when you first log into a Chromebook, it does in fact create a profile for you, and that's what takes a little time. And as more and more students log into different Chromebooks, those profiles build up and build up and slow down the device over time. And once you have your personalized Chromebook that has your profile built into it, you don't even need an internet connection to log into that. Your profile is there, you can just log in and start working immediately.
One last thing, Chromebooks, their battery life is excellent. So with BYOD, we have kids bringing in their, their MacBooks or a PC of some kind, and inevitably, the batteries are dying during the day, and the charger is of course at home. So I would just say that the Chromebooks are incredibly long-lived. They have very wonderful battery life. They load up really quickly, unlike a PC or something like that. And if we're all using the same sort of device, of course, we would also have adapters for everybody to get a charge if they needed it. I mean, we would set the expectation that kids would show up ready, but it would be a solvable problem. So I think that in their light, you know, if they're carrying them back and forth, like of all the devices, we're definitely late adopters on this one. So I think we've learned from some of the mistakes that other districts might have encountered. So I think it's definitely the right tool in the right time.
And I was thinking about what you were saying about organization. And with the use of Google Classroom, almost everything my kids do is a file that I've made, and then I assign it to them, and I make a copy for each student. So a copy is dropped in their hard drive or in their, on their drive. And they access it, I can see it, I can see them in real time using the document, we can comment back and forth, they could share it to other kids. We've done a fake book profile for Greek gods where they, like, you have Ares and Hera, who are talking on each other's profile with each other. And then I can monitor and make sure all the comments are appropriate, what have you. But, and unlike a backpack, if a kid forgets to label their file or they can't find it, I can search, say, search fake book, and somewhere in their drive, even if they didn't label their file, it will pull up that term. Which is, even if they do struggle, which they do with executive functioning, there's no search on a backpack.
And if they delete it, I have the ability to recover it.
So, we have calculated the cost, because after all, this is a budget item, that's why we were presenting it. Do you want to run through that, Anthony?
Um, yes. Basically...
Sorry, Anthony, can we have the, people are chomping at the bit.
Oh, yeah.
And since we have the teachers, I assume that these are questions.
You want to start with teacher questions?
Yes. Start with teacher questions?
I have a few, but you guys, go ahead.
Good. Judy, you want to start?
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for taking your evening and coming in to meet with us. We really, really appreciate it. And your words were incredibly persuasive. My question is, does the middle school still give the kids those paper planners at the beginning of the year? And I assume that there's a cost to those things.
Positive, positive purchases.
Yeah. But I assume that they cost something, and they're going to go by the boards once we get the Chromebooks, and they're going to learn how to keep an electronic calendar and an electronic... Is that the plan?
That is, that would be my hope, yes.
Okay.
They're money makers.
Well, but they're money makers in the high school, but at the middle school, they give them to the kids.
The planners.
Huh?
The planners aren't money makers.
No, you lose money. You pay for them, you pay for them. So, so that's what I assumed, and I think that's great because, as you said, the rest of their life, they're going to be doing that. But my other, my real question is, what, what is the future of textbooks? Are we going, are we thinking about cloud-based textbooks? Is that something that we're behind the curve on already? What is the shelf, what is the life of a textbook, and what does a textbook cost? I guess are my que... I don't know if anybody can answer this. But to me, that's really, you know, because I'm sort of the keeper, it's my job to make sure we're not like just going out and spending money willy-nilly. But to me, it almost seems like this could end up saving us money. Can someone speak to that?
Absolutely. So actually, about like seven years ago, seven or so years ago, the math department did move to mostly an online textbook. We have a few paper copies, and we did that then, thinking that like we are going to this new world. And that's part of why we did it, and was a cost saver as well. And it has a lot of awesome tools in it, but to be honest, I don't feel like I get to show it as much to the kids because they don't have a device in school. Like, a lot of times, they're using it at home. So we do our best, but I think about how much more I could show them on the online textbook that I can't show them now. Math has already gone out.
Science, we recently bought New Year's Science textbooks, and they are both hard copy for some, for everyone if they need it. And then we also have the digital, it can be read aloud to them and have all those features. So it's definitely, we want to be moving them that way.
In the, oh, sorry. In the language department, we have already made the jump to a more, at least in Spanish, the other two teachers and I have made the jump to a more or less textbook-free class. They make wonderful doorstops.
Yeah.
They're great. We do, I do occasionally still incorporate them into the curriculum as a resource, but it is becoming less and less frequent because, especially with the plus kids who are at a totally different level and have a totally, the skill set that they have is so different from our students who started in sixth grade, just because of the way that they've been taught. The textbook no longer works for them. They would look at something in the book and say, this makes no sense, and it has nothing to do with real life, which, they're entirely correct. And that is why we, we have started to get rid of them. We are instead using our textbook money to purchase additional resources, either a subscription to adiostextbook.com, which helps us with our formation of unit or, or, I forget what the French teachers just, just got recently, but we are using it for different resources now that are much better suited for our curriculum.
And so that'll, we think, I assume that you all think that'll accelerate if we do the one-on-one Chromebooks?
In our department, certainly.
And I just have one comment, which is, my son in college wrote every single paper on, in Google Docs. There was like nothing else. There was only Google Docs. There wasn't even Microsoft Word. I mean, it was like, because that's what he did here in high school. They started Google Docs. And so he, you know, so I think, I think it's great, I think it's a great idea.
And to answer your question, Judy, about the costs of textbooks, they obviously range, but we've had textbooks definitely in that seventy-five to a hundred-and-even-fifty.
Yeah.
That's not a piece, so if you need, you know, fifty, fifty, seventy-five, a hundred, it adds up.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And two-fifty for three years versus...
Well, you pay for the online subscription, too, so a lot of times, you almost get the textbook for free because you're really buying the online.
It used to be one or the other, now they're...
Both.
They're both.
That's interesting.
One thing we also find we need more of is we have more students that need the read aloud or visual adjustments that you can do with online textbooks that you can't do with the regular ones. So we're not going to replace textbooks at any time in the near future, and most of us in the Social Studies Department, we're using a lot of teacher-created materials. But we do use the textbooks for reference. And we have been trying to purchase online subscriptions that can be used in the Special Ed Department or other places. So for those students that do need to hear the textbook read to them, or where they can enlarge the font, it just makes, having the device and the ability to do that online really makes it possible to meet a student where they're at. And it's not in a publicly open fashion. So if I need the print size blown up to sixteen font, I can do that privately on my own device, rather than teacher handing out, here's your special giant font copy, which students don't like to stand out. So it allows them the ability to work where they need to be privately, and for us to manage that online.
And we have, our textbooks, I think we replaced in two thousand and six, the Ancient History textbooks. And we use them occasionally. What I would be using if my kids had computers is Newsy LA, because there's four and five reading levels available of articles for kids. So I can give my tenth-grade reader, who's twelve, their seventh-grade level, and I can give my third-grade level kid their level, which is super hard to do with any print and the same kinds of articles. Because I might be able to find a third grade, you know, about bunnies in here, but it's not going to get nearly the content or the sophistication. It's keeping an academic article, but bringing the language level down so that everybody can access it.
Fascinating. Thank you very much.
We could talk about this for days, so.
That's a really important point, though. That's an equity issue.
Judy, do you have something that's new and different?
Yeah. Thank you. Well, that's not new and different, but thank you for, for coming in and talking with us tonight. It's really valuable. Ms. Hurley, we had the, the pleasure of visiting some schools together, one which was a one-to-one. And I think we all had a feeling of, this didn't really feel good. How, how do we ensure that, that it doesn't feel here like it kind of felt walking through the halls there?
So what Mr. Jaffe's referring to...
And you don't, you don't need to...
Yep. We just walked in and the students were very wired up, and many screens, and the entire high school and middle school areas were ghost town silent because everybody was plugged in to a device, and we heard no talking, no laughing, no arguing, no learning. It was creepy. It really was. And that was years ago. So I would say, you know, based on our culture and our value, our heavy, heavy value on relationships and communication and eye contact and collaboration and all the work we just did with Portrait of a Graduate, I don't see us ever going somewhere like that. And as a test case, right, where I've had the devices in my room day in and day out, we do more what Kim was mentioning. We hop on for ten minutes, we might watch a sample of video, we might do a formative assessment, and we hop right back off. We're right now setting up an egg lab, we've got the figure of the eggs, and then, okay, now we're going to make a data table. And we hop on, we hop off, so there's none of that zombie checked out, zoned out, we'll just put them in front of a screen, and I'm like done as the teacher. I feel very confident that we would never, ever, ever get to that place.
And there's, there's communication between the kids when they're on the computer.
And all of the project-based learning and interdisciplinary work, and they're starting something in English and finishing it, and social studies. I just feel like it's, everything is ping-pong and networking and collaborating, and it's working on, it's just all together all the time. But yes, I remember, and absolutely not.
A cautionary tale. Yes, you were there also.
Just to add on, one of the things that we're really working on, especially in my Media Studies class, when we have, we really want the daily access to our, our resources online, is knowing when is appropriate to have your device open and when it is absolutely not, close the device. I'll say it three more times, close the device. Because really, if we're going over something as a class, if their screens are open, they're not...
And moving forward, you as the teacher will have the ability to lock that computer so they can't use screen time.
Yeah. So we're really working on the, on the skill, just like, you know, we're working on their filters for not swearing. You know, there are context when that's fine, it's not at that age, but, so really knowing like, okay, this is a moment where I can have my screen open and be working, and then this is a moment where I definitely, I know already based on the environment that I need to tune into what everyone else is doing. That's a skill we're working on, too, and that takes some time. But I don't anticipate our middle schoolers ever becoming zombies, unless they have to break.
Thank you. Do you want to, these are all teacher questions.
Well, that's great. I also want to, though, I'm also being aware of the time at seven fifteen, and I want to make sure that you have a chance to ask things, but I also want to make sure that we have time to get to everything and also let people go. So is it a quick, potentially?
Um, yeah, they should be quick, hopefully.
You can choose one more.
I have, I have two. So I'll just give the other one later to someone else. So differentiated learning that would be more analog, kind of specific, is there kind of a risk around going that other direction? I certainly, I mean, it sounds like there's some wonderful opportunities where there's assistive, assistive learning and tools that are available, that could be made available where a student doesn't stand out. Is there a risk of the opposite, where students really are, they do much better with the book or, you know, writing with, with a pen and paper?
We try to give options a lot of times. We now survey students regularly, do you want this online or do you want hard copy? And some things, they'll say definitely, and if we're doing, for certain skills, you have to do it pen and paper or pencil and paper. So I think there's always going to be a mix of that, where I don't think any of us would want to be fully, we're all on the device or we're all pen and paper. I've got students whose writing I legitimately cannot read when it is not typed. And that is a genuine special ed requirement that they be on the device. But there are other students who have a really hard time with that, or the way they process, the way they think, they need to be drawing it and doing that. And our staff is very open to doing that and having a mix of different learning styles. Usually when we're doing something, there's like a project component where they're building, creating, touching, manipulating things. And there's also a written component or an online component, if that's reassuring.
And I surveyed my kids at the first couple of weeks of school, and it was about seventy percent who said they prefer to type. So there are students who prefer to write.
And just, I could weigh in a little bit on that. I think where special education will be part of the discussion, the case management element, as this develops, there'll be ways to augment it where students have assistive technology and we can incorporate it more, you know, easier into the devices that they have. But I think also where the MCAS is flipping and you have to now apply to be paper and pencil, I think it's kind of going in that same direction, but it's always going to be a conversation and option.
Okay. That was a good question. I have just one real quick one for the teachers. As you look at incorporating more technology in your classroom, clearly then you have to let something else go, just because there are only so many hours in the day. Do you feel like there are things that would be worthwhile, that you'd be set, that you don't really have the time to let go, but you have to? In other words, what sacrifices do you think you'll be making? And does this feel like it's worth that trade-off to go to one-to-one and really have technology in the classroom?
I think I'm not looking as much at what I would lose, but the time I would gain, both in instructional time, in teaching, demonstrating, modeling, setting up, where when it's something that's always accessible, okay? Now we're creating your folder for this, this is how you're labeling, this is how you're storing. I think that if we had the ability to do this more routinely, we could embed these habits and build these skills more organically. Right now, it's a very catch-as-catch-can process, which leads with the executive function issues that are already there at this age level. And the fact that they're learning how to do all these things, I think it would enable us to, by building these skills in all classrooms more routinely, I think we would end up saving a tremendous amount of time over the course of the year and build some habits in a more consistent, effective manner than what we currently do, because it is haphazard. We're going to do this in Ms. Collins' class now, but now we're going to go in IT and do it here, and then Ms. Phelan's class. I think that I see more benefits for building skills than losing time to do other things.
So that's for students. How about for the teachers? For you, the prep time that might potentially go into finding the resources or PD if necessary? Like, I know you're shaking your head, but you've been doing this, so that's, do you think that there are definitely teachers who will be choosing to do a PD with Anthony to help them bring technology to the classroom instead of doing something else?
I think that even people who have been using technology, there's still so much for us to learn and grow. So I do think professional development's going to be a big part of it, and we need to make sure that we have a system, this is going to be new for us. So what does this new system look like? Just like we're teaching the kids to, you know, constantly be iterating and thinking about how to change. So I think the professional development will be really important in that. And I think of it more of as a time saver as a teacher, you know? And I think about, I think often, like, okay, if I'm going to do this, what has to give? And a lot of people in our, the environments we've been working in have said, like, try this technology to help with, you know, like, I can now look at a formative assessment much faster than going through all of these papers. And I really found it's a good time saver as opposed to more time.
Or even just something as basic and simple as, I can eliminate probably an hour and a half of photocopying from my kids, half an hour of hole punching. All my kids have to have binders, and I have to hole punch every handout I give them. If I don't, if I don't hole punch it in advance, they won't put it in their binders, and it's gone. So even...
So even just something as basic as like, that is less time I have to carve out of my day to do like the paperwork and like that kind of work for my job.
I spend a block a week hole punching.
Yes.
Our copiers don't hole punch and we manually, like, you can put, if it's a thicker, you can put about three in. So for 90 students, that's 30 iterations of one packet. And we're already pursuing PD with each other. I mean, I've been working with a teacher who's interested in using Google Classroom and never has before in transferring their information from their Aspen website to a Google Classroom and that associated site. We get together on our own time and do that. So people are already looking and we pursue professional development on our own, watching webinars, all sorts of things. So having it, and having everyone get the same information at the same time would be helpful.
Thank you. Maggie.
I have a quick question and we don't have to answer it now, but as I was reading through all of this and thank you for all of your comments, I'm curious if we adopt this, are we going to at some point look to the high school? And that, what would that transition look like, especially with the equity issue?
Yeah, we can talk about that later.
We don't have to answer that now, but.
I guess it's less a question than a comment and a thank you. You know, a lot of school initiatives come down the pike driven by the folks at these tables. And, you know, as you guys know, I'm also a teacher in a neighboring public school district and we are a middle school that's a one-to-one school. We've been doing it for seven years. Your proposal, I just wanted to say, you know, having had a chance to preview it and talking to you, does answer a lot of the things, you know, we were an early adopter and had some of those stumbles along the way. And I was delighted to talk with some of you about the proposal and also to read the documents that you shared because it does, I think, solve a lot of the possible pitfalls and will offer a lot of the benefits that these folks described. And, you know, it means a lot to me to see the district moving in initiatives that are driven, in fact, by the teachers who will be using them every day rather than having initiatives visited upon them. And so I really, I can't understate how much your support of this means in terms of our decision-making, mine maybe.
I've had the privilege of learning from other districts' failures.
Okay. Thank you so much. I so appreciate all of your time.
Thank you.
If you want to stay to talk about money. All right, the dollars and cents of it all.
On TV, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Well, as I have on the sheet, we have the total cost. We'll be going through HP financing and it'll be three annual payments of the $64,000. Now, this number for the 550 units, that's a complete estimation. I don't have the enrollment numbers for next year. And we're also talking about eliminating some of the backup units and using some of our existing Chromebooks now as the loaners for when the ones are out for repair. So this number will be going down. How much is to be determined? We'll figure that out. And I just, I see this cost being consistent moving forward.
Can I, so you said they last about three years? So if we're on a three-year annual payment, does that mean that it's just sort of a constant $64,000 line item?
Yes. Yes. And I anticipate seeing, and when discussing with other districts, I anticipate seeing the cost, printers decreasing, toner and paper decreasing and the amount of money we're spending on repairs to keep the existing Chromebooks going. Now, this price that you see in front of you, that is 100% covering everything. You know, we won't tell the child this, but if he throws it off the roof, it's covered. You know, we don't. Yeah, so it's all, it's all covered.
That's the jury not to hear that.
There'll be no added price moving forward.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you can take off the cost of those planners.
And the professional time you get back.
That's true. Wait, just, oh, does that, does that number, though, that's purely for the devices? That does not include then PD if we had somebody come in? I know you're saying that there's mostly in-house, but if there was somebody, that would be additional.
Correct.
I hopefully have a budget that I would use, you know, instead of doing something else that you're, I'd use that money towards technology-based if we needed it. But really, I think a lot of the magic is already happening here and we just have to share it.
It's actually, it's actually the best kind of professional development. When you ask the teachers, they love to hear from, you know, the big hitters, you know, the great speakers who cost $5,000 or more. But they also talk about experiences like our November Professional Day where they learn from each other. And because if they hear some kind of cool thinking from another teacher down the hall, they can just say, can you tell me again how you did that? It's more authentic and grassroots.
Yeah, so that covers the device, the license and the warranty for the entire life of the device. Three-year warranty. Three-year warranty, yes.
Is financing it this way the best way to? I don't even know the words, but you know what I'm asking you.
Yeah, I mean, because that's sort of the programs that the distributors are, that's how most people are doing it.
Okay.
Right? So that you can spread the cost.
But you've looked at the numbers?
Yes.
Okay, good. As long as you've looked at the numbers and I feel comfortable with them.
Yes.
From an administrative standpoint, both from a rollout standpoint and number of devices as well as from a dealing with unanticipated hiccups along the way, which you always have for anything. Was there consideration about, why don't we beta test and do a sixth grade and then we'll continue those on or do an eighth grade and continue? Or they're absolutely was. I did all the numbers for one grade level and all three of the grade levels. After our surveys and everything went out, the sheer demand for the devices just made me recommend for all three of the, all three of the grades, everyone. You know, it would turn into the sixth grade teachers and the seventh grade teachers and eighth grade teachers all fighting about who needs the device more, who should run the pilot. And numbers-wise, with the, you know, with the $250 throwaway style device, I thought it was, my recommendation was for all three grade levels. And then administrative resource, you don't see that as just to get it kind of rolled out as overtaxing to roll out three grades at once with new devices? No, I don't because again, we've had the privilege of seeing how other districts have done it. And Wally Computer, the company that I work with, they have done this for dozens of districts and I have a very good relationship with Wally. And we've gone over how it's going to be rolled out and how it can be administered very easily. And again, I meet with my team weekly and they are on board 100% and we are all confident that we can handle this.
And this might just expose how little I know about technology. But you mentioned students being able to bring these home, but that not everybody would have access to Wi-Fi in here. We'll continue to explore avenues for free Wi-Fi in state and local programs.
Yes.
How would that work if someone, I mean, I know it's probably not a huge percent of our kids, but.
Well, first and foremost, we have the ability to what's called enable offline drive. So a child can take their Chromebook home, log in no problem, work on all of their Google Docs, everything that they have in Drive, including shared documents from Google Classroom, and they can work on them at home like they have an internet connection. And then whenever they hit an internet connection, whether it be back here at school, at a public library, a coffee shop, it automatically syncs everything right back up so they don't miss a beat. We did talk in my department about investigating, you can get mobile hotspots from carriers. A lot of districts are using those where there's like shady cell service and things like that to help students keep access. But otherwise, it's just, you know, Boston offers a, I can't.
wickedfree.com.
Wicked free, wicked free Wi-Fi.
For anyone who's a Boston student, that's awesome.
It's becoming a thing, you know, to make sure that everyone stays connected out there. And I'll obviously do my best to make sure that happens as well.
That was a good question.
Do we want to get back to that high school question? Can we do that?
Well, yeah, I didn't mean to prolong. I don't know if we can answer that now, but I just imagine these kids marching through and getting used to this and then you get to ninth grade and.
Right. So from this day forward, we have a year to think about what the high school is going to look like because those eighth graders can become ninth graders and there needs to be a plan. At this point, the high school faculty is very jealous that the middle school faculty has got to bring this forward first. We think developmentally that Chromebooks for everybody at the middle school makes sense for the streamlining purposes and the building executive functioning skills in an organized and sequential manner makes sense. You know, they start using them in their classes in fourth and fifth grade. They start, you know, creating their Google files in fourth and fifth grade. So to have your own middle school makes sense and for them to all be the same, we need to bring a committee of high school teachers together and say, what makes sense for the high school team? What can we learn from the other districts, both positive and mistakes? You know, do we want all ninth graders to have a Chromebook or the option of having a Chromebook that they can bring through the next four years? And you can opt out and bring a MacBook if that's something that you're more comfortable with. There's lots of things we need to discover. The high school is more than ready to have that conversation. We just need a little bit more time. But in the meantime, we'll be, you know, with your permission, be able to cycle through six, seven, eight, back to six, seven, eight and hopefully have some more information a year from now.
Well, providing, say, we go forward with this for the three grades, does that allow you some surplus of Chromebooks to be moved over to the high school? And then for kids who want, a lot of kids get a computer or a Chromebook in high school, but would that be allow, would that allow for, even if you don't go one-to-one right away there, for more of like a checkout system?
Yes, thank you.
It's essential. Yeah, we need to do that for MCAS purposes at the high school. A lot of the inventory that we have here at the middle school will in fact be designated to the high school.
And the BYOD, same problems you hear here or at the high school. So for the students who don't bring them regularly, the teachers are saying we don't have enough to go around. So the surplus of current Chromebooks that are still up and functioning will move up there and provide more resources to the teachers.
Yeah, that was actually a way to keep them happy. Piggyback on your question, would there be increased availability for potentially dedicated equipment at high school for kids who need it? Whether it's IEP or just differentiated learning where that's the, you know, they do well with.
So anybody who is required through an IEP has access to whatever technology that they have. If there are needs that a student has and they're not on an IEP, but we realize that there is just a learning preference. You know, we have, the guidance team is fantastic about finding the resources and providing them regardless of how we need to get them. You know, moving forward, if we roll out a, everybody has a Chromebook or you have a Chromebook unless you want to bring otherwise, or everybody has a MacBook situation, I think the equity piece will only get better. But for the meantime, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
I think you can't understate how frustrating it is for teachers when some kids come with computers and can log on, others don't. And I've heard, Anthony was in the meeting and so was Beth, I believe, from high school teachers saying that, you know, this is crazy because we can't get our kids logged on. So then we have to go and print all these documents, 25 pages worth of documents that could have easily been an electronic file on these machines that cost a ton of money to keep going, these copier machines that are a big expense and a waste in terms of use of paper. So they were expressing that frustration. I think if we had a magic wand, we would go through the same process with the high school shortly thereafter and move as quickly as we could as opposed to, you know, just extending it to ninth grade and then 10th grade so that, you know, rolls out over four years. Because that, you heard that from the teachers and I think that that is one of the huge kind of compelling drivers for this is that there's just so much inconsistency. And I was completely on board with the BYOD. I think in my interviews here, I think I actually spoke about that because I wasn't completely sold on the one-to-one, but the cost of these has come down so dramatically. And the fact that we are a Google domain is just becoming this platform that teachers and kids are all using. And it's recognizable everywhere. Now, that may change, but right now, that's what's current. And so it is practical. And I do, I do think that high school people will want us to look at this pretty quickly.
Right. And if I could just say one more thing, it's just to reiterate the fact that Chromebooks and technology is a tool. It is not the curriculum. So while we roll this out for every grade, it doesn't mean that every teacher has to use them every day or at all. This is a tool that the kids will have with them, just like they might have a calculator and a pencil that can be used, hop on, hop off, or, you know, not in this class.
It does bring up a question that I haven't had a chance to talk to Scott about, but, you know, kids carrying these around and being able to lock them up and backpacks and that's going to have to be something that would have to be ironed out as to how kids could carry these.
All of our kids have lockers.
Yeah. And time to get them.
And they're going to love however they decorate them.
Yeah, the cases, I think, will be a big part of it so they can personalize it, so it's distinguishable.
I can, I'll never forget the parent who came into my office with a backpack filled with bricks, literally, when I was a principal and slammed it on my table to let me know just how heavy their child's backpack was, filled with books. So this might solve that problem too.
Yeah. I'll just add that there will be, when we roll out the version two of your budget, you will see it increase because the placeholder that we placed back in early December is a lower number because we are looking at things differently than what the presentation came. So you're probably looking, we have about half of this already built into your budget and the other half will be adding version two.
Is there any other technology that teachers have been clamoring for? Less of an upgrade and it's really more, because I've heard like chatter through the grapevine that there are kind of support services they rely, like the copy machines without hole punches or not having hole punchers that will punch through 50 pages at a time or things like that. Are there things that are not being considered that ought to be that they're clamoring for?
We've actually been upgrading even our copiers to be more cloud-based printing. So that you don't even have to go stand at the copier. So I think that whatever they bring to us, we actually try to fulfill. And like I said, that's caught on. So now other departments know about that. The math department did way back and are adding that to their, to their copiers. But I'm told, and we'll have to see, because we do spend a lot of money on copiers, toners and paper, that we will see a reduction in that, in that arena that would help offset this. So I think that will be something I'll be looking at, see if we see that play out.
And along those lines, one of the things that I feel Dover Sherman has done a really nice job with and I think Bill deserves the credit for this and Dawn, was the fact that we now look at our budgets and say, you know, just because you have $15,000 in your textbook line doesn't mean you just ask for another, you know, keep it at 15 next year. You ask for what you need. So what we really need to do is assure the communities that we will, in fact, if this goes through, be looking at the middle school textbook costs, at the middle school copier costs, the paper costs. We, and should, it's on us to reduce those. So that would be a very reasonable expectation from the communities is that we will then remake those appropriate reductions.
And we've been doing that anyway, just so, I mean, I've downgraded a lot of copiers and abilities because now I'm able to look at the volume and what they're using it for. And we don't need the top of the line anymore. So I've definitely, even the cost of the machine overall has gone up. We've lowered our costs because we're bringing in what we really need. So there's not an automatic. I've got a couple of copiers coming up right now and so we start from fresh before we do the new leaves. So that's, we're going to be looking at every line item.
But I think that's something we need to think about is that the cost and that this is, once it goes into place, it's an annual addition. So say, we'll round it up even though it might be a little bit less, $65,000 a year for the middle school. If it then goes to the high school, you figure it's closer to 85, maybe closer to 90,000 for the high school. So 150-ish thousand per year would be what we're saying that we're committing to, to add. So that's, you know, a teacher and a half.
I'm confused about that. So like, is the useful life of a, like, all right, just say we go eventually, just a child keeps a Chromebook that we give them for their whole time, six to 12. Do we, and do we anticipate that we would have to replace that device halfway through its use?
Yes. The way I would do it is I would keep the devices at the middle school and are at the high school because the high school, you could definitely get away with doing a four-year cycle on a slightly different device.
Okay.
But, you know, again, that's something we discuss moving forward as we investigate.
But that, you know, again, that's something we'd discuss moving forward as we investigate the high school. Yeah, the, I mean, I'm, I'm just really reaching for the, for the middle school right now. And because again, that, that number should go down and I look forward to seeing the, the cost of the printing supplies and the repairs and all that stuff going down too. I look forward to documenting that. I hear from a lot of people.
Which I think is important to note, but the fact still remains that we right now are looking at this as a budget item. And so we have to be really straightforward and honest with ourselves about what that number looks like. It's, it's add, it's like adding a teacher.
Right.
Position, like monetarily.
Although I think, I think it's really important, I would really like to see, um, whether we can, whether we can stretch out that useful life.
Well, you've got to do it twice. You've got seven years. So you're not going to get the one device.
High school, you're saying.
Right. So you're not going to get one device through seven years.
No, but I know.
So then you're to two, two device, you know what I mean? If you're assigning it for our kid and you're ba, you're marrying the device to the kid.
Right.
Part of it's the warranty.
The warranty is, it's a three-year life.
You lose that warranty.
Maybe you can buy up at four. You can buy a four year.
You can pull some of them for four years and have.
So that would maybe be at the high school. But so that's why we've got a three-year, it's a three annual payment. So it's a three year.
Right. But for the high school, if you could do a four year and you stretch them out for four years, that could save us a lot of money.
But what, you know, just for perspective, places, um, other communities that have gone to these one-to-ones with, um, MacBooks even five years ago. What kind of investment were they putting down to do that? Do you have any idea?
Lot bigger.
It was more.
Yeah, a thousand bucks a kid.
Right. It's a major commitment. So I, I do think, I agree, it's expensive. It's an expensive, um, uh, uh, request. But at the same time, we could potentially be getting a, a lot of bang for the buck, um, in comparison to what some other places, um, have put down for the same kind of, um, benefit.
Yeah, I, I think what I hear you saying though is that, hey, if, if the pie is limited, we have to be cognizant of, okay. If the, if it doesn't offset the copy costs, then something else might need to be shrunk in order to fit into the.
Yeah, we just have, we just have to be aware of that.
So one of the things that, and it, it's not really, I'm not proposing it, but maybe we can at least have it in a back pocket if we're finding that there is a hole. Is that we consider some type of a user fee. It's still a school-owned piece of equipment, kind of like the athletic fee. Again, I'm not suggesting it, but maybe that if we do have some, some fiscal hole, um, we could introduce something like that. Where that fee could be waived if a family says, you know, we really, we can't, can't afford that.
The only thing I would say to that, Michael, we have actually processed that. Great minds think alike. I was thinking the same thing and Beth brought up a really important point, which is that, you know, with our athletic fee and with our, uh, performing arts fee. Those are kind of for extras, whereas this is part of our, it's really part of our required supplies.
Which we actually are responsible for providing.
So I don't think, I don't think we could charge that one. I don't think so.
Districts do.
Do they?
Do it a different way.
Would be like charging for a textbook.
Which you can't do in public school.
I'd like to, we can certainly learn more.
Question, where are we at with this? So are we voting on something tonight? Are we just considering it or like, okay?
Yeah, we're just. You have until March really, right?
When you vote your final budget.
Do you need information to move forward though? Like, can you hang around till March and?
Sure. So I want to respect your process and the thought that you need to put into the budget to make sure that whatever you do is in the best interest of the kids in the towns. I think what we'll do is probably continue to ask questions and formulate the plan. You know, you saw a lot of draft writing. We'll continue to clean things up. We'll write, lay out a PD plan should we need it. And then in March, we either move forward or don't.
And I think we were going to go back and tighten up the budget a little bit with a little bit more known enrollment.
I think so. I think they've got this in that conversation.
Fill the surplus with machines that we currently have.
Yeah, I sort of feel like, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I sort of feel like it, this year's budget's looking pretty good. We could, we seem to be thinking that this is probably a really good idea and we could swing it financially. I'm, I'm just sort of trying to be responsible and think future.
It's not a one-year decision.
It's not, right. It's not a one-year thing.
Right. And just one more, uh, thing to add to the budget implications. Um, keep in mind that, um, it, it, the sixty-four thousand, there's al, there's also, um, we're talking, if we didn't do that, there would be probably a seventeen thousand dollar replacement cycle cost that would still hit the Chromebooks.
I guess in terms of what, what, like, as we sort of move on from this, one thing that I'm curious to know, um, is if you would like feedback from individual members. How would you best like, would you like us to funnel it through the chair and then you get kind of a memo of our thoughts? What, what would be the most helpful, first of all? And secondly, um, is it possible for you guys to generate sort of a, a, a sheet of, okay, here's the sixty-four thousand dollar a year option. Um, like I walked into this thinking like a one-year pilot would be the best thing. But I'm thinking differently about it now after the conversation. Okay, it's sixty-four, might as well just rip a Band-Aid off and solve a lot of problems at one time. But sixty-four thousand dollars, if we could have on the other side of the sheet, like, what are the things we wouldn't have to do and estimate? Okay, seventeen thousand dollars to replace these other things. Estimated savings we think we could do in co, in copies or in replacement of drums or printers. Some of it's obviously a projection. Don't be overly rosy about it, but it would be helpful for us to see, like, you know, just by, if we say no to this, it's not like a zero-sum game. So if we could understand that, that would be super helpful for me.
Absolutely.
In the coming months.
Sure. And in terms of process, I leave that up to, you know, the chair to decide how you want to handle communication with us, questions, thoughts.
It's probably easier if it comes from, you know, if it, if it went to Anne and we had one document kind of with the school committee's questions slash concerns that come to you afterwards. Because you're going to think about this or you might, you know, look into it further or whatever. It's easier, but it's not a deal breaker. I'm sure either one of us will take the question, so.
Well, that's, that's fine with me. We'll like how it worked today.
Yeah, that was perfect.
Compiled and then passed on. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And Anthony, thank you also for all the work that I know that you've done for this. That was.
A pleasure.
Beth as well. Thanks.
I enjoy it.
All right.
Thank you.
Kate, there I am. It's your turn.
So I, um, am proposing a creation of the secondary special education coordinator. The budgetary impact would be, um, a point five FTE for an administrator. Because, uh, the idea of the role would be that it's in regional administrator. And also would encompass the out-of-district coordinator responsibilities. So the thinking around this position would be that, um, they would be the regional supervisor of all special education staff. It's very similar to the elementary coordinator position with Naomi O'Brien that has been working very, very well. And they would also be the regional administrator at a lot of the middle and high school, um, meetings. Again, those things have been, um, played out by me this year and I have really enjoyed being able to do that. But I think as going into this year after the reorganization, one of the things to, to look, that we've been looking at has been whether that focus at the region, um, takes away from the district-wide perspective of the role. And while I've really enjoyed being able to learn so much about the, the region and the staff and be the direct supervisor for all special education. Support people and programming, I do believe it's, um, it's necessary to have someone as the kind of parallel role as the elementary coordinator. Um, in order to have more of a focus at the region. And the out-of-district coordinator, um, responsibilities, I think also are really, an out-of-district coordinator is usually year-round. Because there's a lot of things that happen, um, during the summer that, um, this role being year-round will also, um, support. And it's usually a leadership position as well, just in previous districts that I've at least observed. And I think one of the helpful pieces to the role will be the K to twelve focus of what programs are being, we are sending students to and what kinds of supports we should, um, be bringing back in. The out-of-district coordinator position has had that focus, but I think where this position would allow for the conversations with the elementary coordinator and the secondary coordinator, there would be more of a kind of longevity as far as what we have coming up as needs. And what would be beneficial to think about for students and what, um, kind of placements that, that they need. I think, um, this role, you know, addresses that concern of the, the focus that I have been able to have this year. But I think it also would be a great support to me and, um, I think allow us, allow kind of a more balanced nature for the director of student services. And, um, that's the position and that's the, yes.
Can I ask just a technical question? How many, um, teachers and other, like the first bullet is special education related sort of staff that's required? How many people are that case?
Twenty-five at the middle and high.
So we're gonna, so right now you supervise all those people? And we're going to be asking this point five person to supervise those twenty-five people?
It will, so at the, both at the middle and the high school, the supervision is shared with building administration. So, um, at the, and the understanding would be that I would also share in some responsibility. So the way I envision it would be that, uh, there'd be some programmatic support. So for example, I'd want to remain the grit supervisor for some of the support people and the teachers in that program. And as well, maybe have that evaluation responsibility at the elementary and high school level. So I have more of a strand for some of the programs. So it wouldn't be that I don't supervise any of the people. But they would have the main role of supervising at the, the special education staff.
And just, just to, um, add to what you've, um, explained, Kate, which was really helpful. I know this is, seems like a long time ago, but when we were talking about the sped reorg and when we first had the special education review and Dorsey came. We, we had many, many conversations about whether or not we should do this. I think we had them at the school committee level and, um, I admit, I was advocating for the, the way we did it. And the saving of essentially what amounts to now point, uh, five FTE. Cause I believed that we should try it. Um, and it is still somewhat early, but I can see, um, how Kate has been, uh, drawn away from kind of the district perspective. She's serving as more of a secondary supervisor, um, by, by necessity. And, um, I think what we may not have factored in is the symbolic importance of the, the twenty-five people here. And the, the, the gen ed staff as well, of knowing that there is somebody who is directly responsible for oversight of special education at the region. Remember in that program review, in that, that there, it was clear to me, absolutely clear, um, that, uh, their findings were indicating that there wasn't strong supervision of special education by specially, special education trained staff. That came out loud and clear. So it is true that, um, Kate has been managing it. But when you throw in all those evaluations that were being done by principals without special education backgrounds, that's, uh, it's really, it, it, it hasn't worked. Um, and so I just think it's really important to, to mention that because that's the perspective that Kate wasn't here for. But we have talked about it, but I, I know that you guys remember us talking about that. And by the way, it's important to know, and you may not know this, but at the elementary level, we feel like that has worked incredibly well. Having a special education coordinator at the elementary level has made all the difference in the world. I truly believe that that was the absolute right decision. And, um, I'm sure that there are people who would say, told you this was going to happen. And perhaps they're right. But, um, we tried to go with the most cost-effective route, but that's where we're coming from on this.
There is, is there a person currently, I'm sorry, I'm like.
No, just keep going.
There's a person who currently holds the out-of-district point five position.
Half of, yes.
Okay. But the new position would do both jobs and that would be a person with administrative licensure?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I would just say that I, I, yeah, I think there was, um, some skepticism around the table, uh, when this was approved last year. And, and I don't think it, I, I think it was good, hey, let's give it a try, see if it works, see if it's that, but I don't, this is, it's not a surprise. And, um, I think it's a good thing to do.
I have a quick question about how, so the elementaries, there's the coordinator and then there's one team chair.
Yes.
But the proposal is still to maintain two full-time team chairs, one in each building.
Yes.
And have the coordinator. So if, is there a thought that potentially the team chairs wouldn't need, we wouldn't need two full-time team chairs? That, that the coordinator would take on some of that or?
Well, one thing I will say about, so the coordinator will be, will be split between two buildings for supervision and out-of-district. So as far, I think the, the, the team chairs at the middle and the high will be that full-time special education layer of support. That will be necessary. I think at the, at the middle school, it has been one person. And I think that's a great model. That's been helpful for me too, because that person will, um, I check in with the team chairs on a weekly basis and, and we, we discuss things that are going on. So I think that would be helpful to have that person there and that contact with someone in the building at all times. I think that's the one piece to this next layer is that the person will be supervising, but will not be in one of the buildings at all times. So I think it helps to have the teachers. And I do think that at the middle and the high school level. The, um, just the numbers of students are, that are, you know, being reevaluated. And, you know, our number of students at the middle and the high school level is really where our bulk of out-of-district placements are. So I think there are a lot of, you know, cases that need to be monitored and are a little, I have a little bit more complexity. So I do still think that, uh, one point oh in each building for a team chair does still make sense as that first line in the building.
Well, because your, this coordinator is essentially a point five coordinator. The rest of that person's time is out of district.
Right.
And whereas at the elementary level, the coordinator is a full-time coordinator and therefore can pick up some of the heavy cases for team chair.
Is your team chair in each of the buildings also attending out-of-district meetings and, or the out-of-district coordinator is chairing them?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, yes.
So I have to say, I'm totally in favor of doing what we need to do to make sure the students' needs are being met and that we're providing all the support that we can do. But once again, as before, our job is to think budgetarily. And, and a, and a little bit of the, the thought that we've added and we're adding another administrative, it's only a point five, but another administrative position. And making potentially the, are we becoming, thinking about, are we becoming top-heavy? In part because I, it's a little bit of a personal thing, but when I was at Pine Hill, you remember when we had to start making cuts? And the cuts then went to administrative, administration, because the thought was, as soon as there's money or we're doing okay financially, we'll add administrative roles. Cause we can't cut teachers. And I just want to make sure that once we've put things in place and structures that work, that there are things that we can sustain. So that's something that's for us to think about.
Is the one-to-one and this position our two main program improvements this year? So we think about, you know, our budget being, you know, level, these are the two big chunks. This is, is there other things that we're going to meet and you're meeting, like special treats that we want?
With cost associated.
That's what I'm getting.
With cost associated, these are the two.
These are the two nuts.
Two kind of major programmatic shifts. We do, we do envision, um, a program but using existing staff, um, for, for the continuation of grit at the high school level.
I just, my concern is like, I like to look at, like, when thinking about the school budget and just like level services and other things that we can't control. Like, I just want to understand, like, are all the shiny new objects, I want to see them all before we have to say yes or no to them.
To any of them.
The two, right. This is sort of the two big ones.
Right. So when, so correct. So when the next iteration of the budget comes out, all those shiny new objects are there. There are no surprises.
And there'll be a price tag attached to this?
So I think that because these are bigger nuggets, that's why we wanted to roll them out. So you had to try to think about them. And then February is in your timeline. I said, that's when we're going to pull it all back into the budget. At that point too, we'll pull together any other thing. At that point too, we'll pull together any other things that we know about. And that will take advantage of savings from retirements. There's a few little class or section additions that we're looking at, but I think all of that's gonna be budget neutral and you're probably gonna have a little bit more money that will offset some of staffing costs for them. So these are, these are the bit, the new shiny things that we wanted to bring out early enough to give you enough time to think about it before that March time client comes in.
Thank you very much.
Right. And along those, along those lines, I, I completely agree because it's the school committee's responsibility. It's ultimately their responsibility to be responsible with the budget. But it's my responsibility to think about the big picture of, of, of this operation and how everything works. So I don't, I, I wanna be careful of calling it a shiny new object cause I've considered it something that we haven't had, which is adequate supervision of special education throughout the district. To me, that is something that we as a system have, have not been on top of the way we should have and it's costing us. It's cost us in many subtle and different ways that are kind of hard to clearly identify. I could go down the list of ways that it's cost us though, and I think we did last year during the review. So, so we would know definitely, you'll see in February and there are no other kind of, no, no other surprises that, that I'm aware of that are coming down the line for the budget. So I think it will, when you see it all put together, it will, it will look pretty reasonable. The big question, as Anne said, is so what does this mean down the road, two, three years? Especially if the one-to-one for the high school. And those are excellent questions and that's something we all have to kind of.
Can I ask a question? It's probably. Sorry, just before, wait, just before you do that, can I just really quickly add on to you? Thank you for saying that. I think too, it's not so much the stuff that we have not been doing, it's that situations have changed. Technology has changed. It's gotten, bringing, keeping students in district has allowed us to, means, means we need to provide more services sometimes for, for students.
But that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a good thing because we're adapting.
Right, but it's, so it's not necessarily stuff we've missed, it's things that have changed and grow, which we need to do as a district.
Yep.
We still need to think of as, as we spend here, what is, what's becoming outdated and antiquated that we've outgrown?
Yep.
And that's part of it.
And I'll just add a little commentary, cause I have been almost somewhere at these tables for almost ten years now. And I will say that I'm extremely excited about where we've gone with the whole special ed structure. I think we finally almost have it right. It's, we've really struggled. Because back in the day, we were in our silos, where each district had its own director and no one talked to one another. And there was a line between special ed and, and regular ed. It is amazing how that's changed and that's for the benefit for all students. And some of that comes with a little bit of a cost, but I really feel like now we're doing well-rounded. We're just now a school versus special ed, regular ed. And I, I credit Kate and Naomi for coming in and, and bringing that all together. Cause it really, your structure is only as good as the people that you put in it. And we really have lucked out with the people. So I think the districts just feel really great about where we are right now. And know that this is, every dollar we're spending is making a huge impact. This is really hugely beneficial for all students.
And the only comment I wanted to make or question, and, and again, it may be pretty evident, but if you have the person who is doing the out of district, and I know, I guess our goal is to bring as many kids in district as is appropriate, but that, but moving toward that goal and that person also being the supervisor of the in-district program in a sense, I wonder if subliminally, it might help us with that goal because they're seeing both sides. I don't know, I could be completely wrong.
Nope, absolutely.
That makes, that makes very good sense, Judy.
You know, and, and that's a good thing. I, and in the long run, frankly, that's where we're gonna save the money. Is by, by making our schools much more able to service a wider range of kids with needs.
And to get to observe the students at the schools and really be a continuum. So the families will have a consistent person that, that they will, no.
It, it, I hate to sound corny, but it's true. We, we set our sights as a district on these strategic goals. And this is all kind of part of it. If it's, it, it's the difference between a strategic plan that was built the right way, that people had chances to weigh in on, that's discussed frequently, and one that's just kind of sitting up in the cabinet and it doesn't mean a thing. Where actually, I feel as if, as a system, as a system, not just Chicaring or Pine Hill or the region, are pulling as a system for things like equity or, you know, consistent delivery of services, consistent evaluations. These things are all coming to fruition, which is a beautiful thing. So this would not be something you'd vote on ultimately until the budget.
Right. Thank, thank you. And if people think of new questions or thoughts that they'd like to share with Kate, just to send them through me. And thank you so much for coming out tonight and then we'll see you again next week.
Yes, you will.
Okay, awesome, let's move back to then.
Actually, would you go ahead and just finish on twenty-one proposed in multi-capital?
Okay.
Right, so in your packet though, you did have a memo just to sort of bring us back. Your timeline of all the key meeting dates of the budget, so I think that could put this on.
Thank you for doing that, that's huge.
But, but I think I laid out here what version, what your version two point oh is gonna be. Cause by time February comes, we will have updated state numbers. Cause if you remember, we build your budget based on our fiscal year twenty numbers. So the governor's budget should come out, the first version should come out the third week of January. It usually comes out after his state of commonwealth. And we'll have new numbers to start plugging on the revenue side. And then we'll, as we noted here, follow through with taking advantage of any staff retirements that we know, additional, additional section and programmatic needs. And we may know a few other little line items. I have actually just got the Norfolk County number. So we're getting some pieces of information in that will help us progress a little further with your February version on the first one. Knowing that healthcare and such that doesn't come until your February twenty-sixth meeting, which is why we have, the twenty-fifth meeting, which is why we have that meeting. So I can present all up-to-date information before you have your joint meeting with the two finance groups. So that's why you have the package. In your, hopefully everyone got, under your nameplate, I put a couple of handouts for your budget block. The first top was the budget guidance from both Dover and Sherburne, which we have saved here now. So you can put that in your tab one, so that you have that.
Can you tell us in three sentences what they say or no?
It's basically last year, so.
Okay. One sentence.
Not a lot of changes. One thing that we will need to talk to Sherburne about is that, you know, it's level service and they give two percent salaries, but us being like a small municipality, hopefully there's gonna be some accommodations for us for both healthcare and our retirement cost that obviously can't be level service. And, and then hopefully we wouldn't have to decrease in other line items to do that. So that's one of those dances we do every year with you guys. But I think there should be some allocation to the region, similar to you give yourself as a town for those costs that we, that aren't really level service, but just cost of doing business. I think I mentioned that to Steve Plaguey, but just to make another, another little note of that as we continue down this process. So the one thing I did, oh, so you have that. And then, so the next thing is the five-year capital plan, which is here for you. And let me just walk the, through the, I had an opportunity to sort of preview this with Anne as your building rep. It is definitely a work in progress. We are in a quirky, as I said, time where we've got all these really significant projects potentially coming down the pike in the next five years. And we're trying strategically to decide what's the best way to sort of attack them. And so over the last year or so, we started having some ideas. And now as we're getting closer, we're trying to solidify those a little bit more. So I've mentioned to you that we're working with a, a group called Amoresco that Andrew has some experience with the Easton. So I'm delving deeper into what they can provide for us. They basically come out and do an energy audit and then allow, help you set yourself up so that savings that you can get from energy savings would help offset the cost. So we're looking at doing that. I'm looking at doing either in small pieces or all one big project. So that's something that over the next month, I will have more information for you. So if you do, if you latch on to certain energy solutions, there's ways that you then pay, you sort of finance it.
You're financing that.
Through your electric bill.
The savings goes to the financier.
If, if you incorporate some of these energy savers.
Right, right.
Such as, such as potentially solar, for example?
Yeah, there are a bunch, a bunch of different outfits that do that.
Right, and, and it goes beyond just solar. There's like twelve different things that we can do. Obviously, the one that's pushing me to, to work on this a little faster is the EMS system. So as you know, back in fiscal year eighteen, there was a, there was a project approved for an EMS upgrade. That was a number that I think, I think I had just come on board. So we'd, we'd held off on that because we really weren't sure what we were gonna do. And remember, whatever we do here, we're gonna piggyback on at the two, the two districts. I, having worked with an engineering group at Chicaring for the air conditioning, I actually asked them, if I, I told you guys, asked them to come in and do sort of an engineering study for our EMS. So we have a better understanding of what it was entailed and what the true costs were. So we did that last March. And the cost to do just sort of the, the initial first phase of an EMS project is substantially more than what the placeholder was that we were holding. Cause I don't think we had taken it to the, the complete project process to, to get, to get the benefits. So for right now, that's the biggest change you're gonna see between what you saw in twenty-one from last year and what you're seeing in twenty-one now, is I've added three hundred thousand to supplement the hundred and fifty thousand that's remaining in fiscal year eighteen capital for an EMS upgrade. There are opportunities for Eversource, it's called X, Eversource Project Expediter, where you can get some financing, so we might not have that full cash outlay. But that's what I'm looking at right now to hope to have more information for you in February.
And that, that doesn't include yet any potential offsets?
Correct. That is the gross number. That is the saving, that is the cost if we didn't do any of these fancy opportunities out there. We just went out on the street and bought it. We're looking at four hundred, about four hundred and fifty thousand to do the project. Of that, the couple, just to reconcile it a little bit, because I, I was trying to reconcile it for myself. About a hundred thousand of that increase though, is to do the CO2 sensors. And that's where you get a lot of energy savings because it can monitor the air. So that was not in our first projection, which has been highly recommended by both our engineer and it also came up from Amoresco as something that you'd wanna do to get payback. And just the whole recommissioning of the system is about another eighty thousand. So you put the new EMS system in, but in order for it to be able to talk to everything, you have to really go and recommission the system. That wasn't a piece also that was built into the initial project, budget that we had pulled.
Can I, does everybody know what EMS?
Energy management system.
Energy management system, gets it, okay.
So it's really like, that's what regulates like, test, you know, you say what your temperature you wanna be. It controls everything.
That duct would be on the computer. Everything's on the computer. You can see how much air intake, how much oxygen, how much is going in, coming out, which unit is down, which unit is working.
It allows you the new system.
Does it include electrical? Yes.
It's, it's both.
And the commissioning you're talking about, like, you might not have these, these controllers in the units to, to move vents back and forth the way you would if it was brand-new construction. So all of that stuff has to be brought up to speed. And so that's where the cost comes.
And we have lots of, I've learned, if you can see the specs. So that piece though, is something that we are knowing, we do know that is starting to not be as efficient here. It's older, it's, it's, the power goes down, the whole thing has to be reprogrammed. And the goal is to have more reliable data. It also will allow it all to be accessed off-site. So that your director facility could be at home and see if there's issues. So you don't always have to be here to be able to do everything.
That would be huge.
And again, we are gonna piggyback on this at the two elementary schools so that our director would have one system that covers all the schools. So this is a big undertaking we wanna make sure we did right here, knowing that it was going to piggyback. So that's a, that's a new number that you, it's being, you know, presented to you for the first time this evening. I have high hopes it might not be that high, but that is, I want to start out at the high water mark and then we'll see where we go over the next month or so. It's a huge investment, but it's definitely a worthwhile investment and there's probably energy savings that we totally will get that will help us pay back on this piece. Other than that, the other items that are on there are what you saw were on there from last year. Just some of the numbers have been tweaked. We're gonna finish the paving. As you know, we were able to do about two-thirds of the paving last year with what we thought was one-third of the budget. So the biggest piece left to do is the student parking lot. And then a few little areas, but that's the biggest piece. And we'll again coordinate that with the Town of Dover Department of High, the Highway Department so that we can capitalize on their state bidding contract. We're proceeding with continuing to replace floors. What's on the docket for next year are the lobby and the hallways of the middle school. And as you go out here, you'll see that the floors are actually starting to buckle and look like they need to be replaced. And we're gonna continue that with the LBT, which is electro-vinyl tile, which we have been doing at all the sites. At the high school, there's classrooms that are slated to be done. Our, we've had a, a rep out here measuring things for us. So he's in the process of finalizing some quotes that I'll bring forward to you. But we're using these placeholders right now at the eighty-five thousand and the fifty thousand.
Have you been having any problems with the LBT or how's it holding up?
No, it's been working well. But we've had some hallways here, like in Lenquist, that were sort of the first ones that we did. But our longest-serving one too is the cafeteria at Chicaring, which as you know, that gets a lot of use and that's really done well. Last year, we did all of Pine Hill hallways and their cafeteria. And the first year's been great. Again, the biggest benefit of this is we're not waxing and stripping, stripping and waxing. So the cost savings and that, exactly. And the time in the summer that the custodians can do other types of work is, is huge. So again, we'll have to wait and see if it gets the useful life that it says, but only time will tell on that, so far so good.
What's the time expected?
Potentially, cause we want the little bit higher grade, you potentially get twenty years. The warranty's not that long, but they were saying that's what you could get. And our floors here, I mean, these are almost twenty years, we're seventeen, eighteen years old. So we've seen good, good life on those. Our guys do a really good job of maintaining the buildings, which then helps the longevity of, of your life. And then the last thing is just the annual upgrade that we do for our wastewater treatment plan. I would say, once you get past two thousand twenty-one, we've got numbers for twenty-two and twenty-three, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't go out and get a loan for that right now. Cause I think those are numbers that we're still totally playing around with. I will say that I have really been looking into MSBA funding though. And I've come to the realization and Amoresco, who I met with today, sort of agreed, I don't see that as an option for us, mainly because our, the age of our buildings, they're not, they didn't even take applications last year unless the ages of these things they're hoping to get funding for were twenty-five years plus. We're not hitting twenty years here until two thousand twenty-three and we know some work needs to be done. In addition, if you read more into how that financing works, need does come into play and community wealth a little bit. So I don't think there are substantial dollars in there. So I do think this energy saving program through chapter twenty-five A is probably the best route for us to go and to save money for the district by doing the energy saving, conservation initiatives. So that's what we're looking into right now.
And by the way, my, my experience with Amoresco came, it was the town actually that was overseeing the maintenance of the schools. So I had the luxury of watching them do all this work. The town administrator and the board of selectmen bringing in Amoresco. And I was, I have to admit, impressed by what they came up with. But it's, it's a complicated process. So as to what Dawn is saying, it's, you know, you have to kind of go through all of it.
Right.
And it all, it's a lot of moving parts.
Right, so, so our rep that we've been working with is hooking me up with someone from the Department of Energy to talk to you because they're the ones who, when you do this, you actually have to get approval from them. And then also someone from Eversource to talk about the. And then also someone from Eversource to talk about the, the Quiky project that we could potentially do standalone with the EMS system. So that will have more information that I'll share with Anne first, and then to the whole committee in February. So that's, that's what we're working on. I will point out that 2025 is the, the first time you've seen 2025, and you will note that the turf field is showing up. And so the number that's there right now is what's in Onsite Insight, that includes the turf field, the track, and the fence. So it's doing the whole shebang. So that's something that we probably, not that we don't have enough to focus on, but something that we probably should start being more aggressive and strategizing our sort of process of how we're gonna handle that.
And is, is that from facilities, did Ralph kind of agree with, yeah, 25, based on how it is now, that's about the right timing? Is he in agreement with the Onsite Insight prediction?
Right, and I, and I relate to Chris Hendricks, our director of grounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, grounds director, because he's like, he's really into that, and so, yes, I mean, that's where we think that we can still work out to that point, that there's nothing that's breaking apart or deteriorating right now, that that, that probably sounds like the right, the right time.
They, they, they can get worn in front of the nets, lacrosse goals and soccer nets, they can get worn spots, and I have been in other systems where they would splice in, but it, it only buys you a short period of time, and it's really not ideal. They, they just have a shelf life.
Right. Well, at the same time, the, the type of fields have changed, so I, my guess is, we probably won't replace it necessarily with the exact same thing we have now, right?
No, definitely.
So it'll be something that we'll have to start researching and, you know, potentially reaching out to the boosters and the other, you know, sports youth groups to see if we can come together on, on making this happen.
Yep.
So, but that was the one number I wanted to point out to you that is in here, that now is appearing, everyone keeps asking, when's it gonna appear?
There it is.
And it's been a year. So I will ask you, well, I will ask the committee for an initial approval, because both towns are waiting for just the first draft of capital from all departments, including the, the region. You're really just approving the 2021 number, but we've sent to them the other four years also.
They have, they have the other years.
We've sent them, yeah. We're gonna send them the other years, but the only, the one that you're really approving that we're seriously considering is 2021.
Do we need a motion? Yeah, so do I hear a motion for the 2021 capital? Ask, can I say high-water mark?
Mm-hmm, yep.
At 545,000?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Always appreciate how thorough you are with that.
The other thing that I've included for you, because I think it plays into well as we think about these bigger projects, is your debt repayment schedule. We usually include that with the capital, because you will see that we, as of 2025, will have paid off the debt. So if you think about it in a way that keeping a level-funded budget, that's a big chunk of money that as of 25, we won't have anymore if we have to start financing some of these other larger projects. So I think, I wanted to make sure you saw that timeline.
Ignorant question around financing. Is, is the, is there an option to finance within the region or to look to the towns? So it could be one of...
Yeah, there's, we now have multiple, so that, the general obligation bonds you see here were taken out by the...
The region, right.
That we've worked out through the IMA, so we would work with the towns to see, does the region wanna take on the debt itself, or do we wanna let each town decide how to finance their piece of whatever we take on?
And so when the time gets closer?
When the time comes, then we decide.
And have those conversations and decide which way to go.
Yeah. In a typical year, we would still go the IMA route, because just to let, it's not a huge number, and the two towns could handle it that way. I'm still looking at this year for 21, that the region could be able to finance it themselves. Because you remember, we do have the transportation money that we put aside to cover capital. So with some other things falling out, it may be, again, that the region can say, we're gonna take this on ourselves, and we won't have to ask the towns to fund it, although the towns like to review it, we wouldn't necessarily be asking for any funding for capital.
Which was a big hit for the towns last year.
Right, so we'll, we'll see how that plays out, but even if our high wa, high-water mark stays, as I was telling Anne, I still think we could probably swing it with the region to cover it themselves.
Thanks. And then, Dawn, you wanna continue?
Let's go, let's go back into the year that we are living, and this could, this could be sort of short and sweet. You have your statements up since December 31st. There is no new information. I, what I did is I summarized the continuing story, so that if you ever forget, you have that executive summary. I will just highlight some of the other business office updates. So we are expecting our auditor to be here in your February, your first meeting in February to present your financial statements for fiscal year 19. We're working on the footnotes right now on that. And with that, we'll also share with you our OPEB actuarial evaluation that was done for our fiscal year 19 statements. We are in the process, we're getting really close, getting ready to set up interviews for our OPEB administrator selection. We had a great conference call, Judy and Maggie and myself, back in December, with Odyssey Advisors, that have sort of some marching orders now. So we'll hopefully have updates from you on that in February. And then I just wanted to remind you that our district president is retiring. If you remember, when we appointed him last year, we announced his retirement. So I've asked Anne to solicit you guys for one or two members to participate on the selection committee. We will pull together a job description and probably post something sometime in February, and hopefully to have, appoint someone in April, so there would be some transition time with our existing treasurer to make for a smooth transition. So that's something that we're really looking forward to. We've had the pleasure of having the same treasurer, we can't even count how many years, because I don't know if the history books go back that far, but it's been great, but it's, it'll be nice to sort of have a new face, and as you remember, he doesn't live locally, so it'd be nice to go back to where we have someone locally who we see a little bit more frequently.
And I'd just like to add that Dawn mentioned to me that you, a financial background is nice, but not required in order to serve on that.
Right.
Kate?
A lot of fingers on noses when you brought that up.
So any questions on the fiscal year 20 monthly report? And then again, going back all the way up is just your monthly warrant report, and you can see there, there's not that many for December.
All right. Thank you, Dawn. All right, we've got the, the review of the 2019 town report. So Maggie was kind enough to write this up with Dawn's help, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn.
And what it is, is that the Town of Dover requests just an update, like an overall report, like the year in review. And everyone has had a chance to look at it and comment, and so I would love to see if we can get a motion to approve, unless there are any questions.
Yeah, if there are any final edits or issues, I have it here, so we can certainly meet with a lot of people.
So you have a motion to approve the 2019 report from the Regional School Committee to be submitted to the Town of Dover and published in the Dover 2019 Town Report. A second? Discussion, all in favor?
We'll send it along tonight.
So, yeah, you sent it to Cheryl.
On time, on time, Maggie.
Let me try. It just, it has to go back into Word and be renamed a certain specific thing, but I will take care of that.
Yeah, just like, because I see like one sentence that actually, I thought I changed to put up at a different place, so I'll just go back.
If you wanna, yeah, or you can just, you can just change. Well, I guess you wanna give it to me. Do you wanna tell us what it is so that we know?
Yeah, no, because I, I thought I cut the pieces so that when we talk about the OPEB funding, it's actually up before the revenues, so it comes with right after all the other expenses.
So you would have, where it says in addition, so DSRSC?
Yeah.
Okay.
Put that before you start talking about the revenues.
Okay. Okay, so, so then it was...
The last sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would say, CDAD covered 11% of these operating expenses. In addition, the DSRSC approved $500,000 from available community education programming reserves to begin funding of the other...
No, I think it would go before the state aid covered, because that, that starts talking about revenue.
Okay. Hang on. CDAD, okay, in that sentence, before state aid covered. Okay, so then it says, and transportation, period, 3.3%. In addition, the DSRSC approved $500,000, blah, blah, blah.
Because that's not a liability.
Then CDAD covered 11%.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we okay with the change? Do we need to make a vote?
Everybody good with that?
Okay.
We're just...
Moving forward. It's going.
Under the consent agenda, we have the appointment of a high, of a high school nurse, because the high school nurse, Carrie Santos, is retiring. And I have to say, just a really quick shout-out to Nurse Santos, because she not only provided this, she took care of kids when they were sick or hurt, but she also provided an ear or a safe place for kids to go when they needed to during the school day, which I thought was really above and beyond. And she attended plays and sporting events and concerts, so a real member of the community. So we wish her the best of luck.
Yes.
But, but one of the weird things that we do is that we appoint a school nurse. So, do I hear a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Janet Chandler as the high school nurse? Y'all have a chance to read her resume and stuff. Do you hear a second? Discussion, all in favor? Welcome to Ms. Chandler, yes.
She, you know, just a funny story, she came in and I thought to myself, boy, she looks like somebody I went to school with named Nancy Chandler. And I mentioned to her, and she said, no, she's not my sister, she is my sister-in-law. So she looks like the Chancellors who lived in Dover, but she's actually married into the family. Small world, strange change. Very nice person, I think we're gonna be really, really happy with her.
Okay, we also need to approve the minutes from December 10th, 2019. Can we do that and the donations all at once?
Yep.
And accept donations, which I have to scroll down, I should have put that in, but thank you.
Lawyers.
Oh, please, thank you, lawyers. Thank you so much to lawyers for their donation to the Regional School Committee.
Yeah.
Okay. But here, a motion to approve then the minutes and the donation from lawyers.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, really, really quickly, there's communications for your perusal. A quick reminder that we have a lot of meetings coming up. We have a joint meeting next Tuesday on January 12th, we have the workshop on January 22nd. The exact time and location is still TBD, and as Dawn noted, all of her notes about upcoming meetings, it's a busy couple of months.
What time is the workshop on the 27th?
Right now, it's slated for 5:30 to 8:30, but the exact time is TBD.
Did you say January 12th?
22nd.
Well, there is, there's, oh, sorry, it's 14th, my bad. Next Tuesday is the, the next meeting, is the joint meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and then the workshop.
Right, so the 14th next Tuesday, then the following Wednesday, in case we don't get enough of each other. And then can I hear a motion to adjourn to go into executive session, not to return to open session? So you need to go...
Oh, to poll?
We have to pause, right, poll, sorry, can we poll?
Yes.
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 Maggie, me, all right. So, who do you adjourn from of y'all? We'll head to the next. Thank you, it was long, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.